Folks, we're back. This is Steve Satchel, Jim Jones with another episode of Veterans in Politics. We have Alan Squires, who's a candidate for Henderson City Council Ward Number One. I believe Michelle Romero had that seat and she went to Mayor. And then, um, uh, was it James Seebach? Seebach, um, he now beat, beat our guy Aaron Johnson, who's our, who's our guy, you know, endorsed him all. But to fill the retention of that, and now, well, to fill the rest of the seat, no, wait. Yeah, to fill the rest of the seat and then it's up for, for him reelection, um, next year. So before we get to Mr. Squires, Jim, you have anything?
Well, actually, you know, I, I, I apologize. I should probably do more rants. But I just don't really like to rant much anymore. I just, you know?
Yep, that's what it is.
Just getting old, but.
Nothing happen in your life?
Oh, there's a lot happening in my life, but nothing that I want to disclose publicly.
Oh, okay.
But.
Do you drive?
Huh? Why is that? Because. Okay, so this is why I've been business partners with this man so long.
Yeah, but when you drive here in Nevada, you gotta have a rant.
Well, that, that's very true. But no, one of the things that, and I'm gonna say the same thing, I always say, I'm always super excited when anybody, when we interview anyone that's running for city council. Because I honestly think it's the most important form of government. I've said that forever, rubber meets the road, you know, I went through that.
Yeah.
Um, and then the city of Henderson is so important and vital to the entire valley that, that we live in, that I'm just always excited that when I get anyone that wants to run for city council, specifically in Henderson. And then also just the fact that anyone who wants to be involved with politics, because politics is, it's brutal. And you know, you and I have been involved in it for years. So, so we know the, like.
And look at us, we look the same, from the very first time we started out, back in early 2000s.
Yeah, so I mean, it's just, so I am, I'm always excited whenever we get a guest on that wants to be involved in the political process. And at the same time, especially at the city level.
You know, Henderson used to be the safest city. I don't know if it's a safer city anymore with the police shortage and all that crime you hear going on.
Well, we could, we'll ask a city council candidate here pretty quick, what he wants to do about those statistics. Cause we got statistics.
Used to hardly ever hear police shooting in Henderson. Now it's like, ah, police shouldn't, Henderson police officer. I mean, I mean, Henderson police officer got arrested. Oh my God, what's going on?
And then it's also interesting too, that before we get into your bio, sir. It's also interesting too is because, okay, so how do you handle managing the city council? When it's Ward One, so it's the, it's the oldest ward in Henderson too. So there's a lot of opportunities and challenges in that area. So I'm just really happy to have someone that's willing to put his hat in ring and wanna step up and want to do what's right for Henderson Ward One.
Thank you. Good?
I'm good.
All right. Mr. Squires?
That was his rant.
That was his rant?
Yeah.
That was my rant.
It was good.
Yeah, he's helping you out.
Yeah, that's a good thing, right?
Please, um, thank you for coming.
Sure.
Tell us about yourself.
I'm a resident, we moved to Henderson about 15 years ago. Uh, my, from, we moved here from Hawaii, Hilo, Hawaii. Uh, we spent three years in Hawaii, before that we were in Orem, Utah.
Why, why did you leave Hawaii?
We, uh, well, I, at the time was a home builder. My, my background is a general contractor.
Okay.
And that was when the bottom fell out of the market. And Hawaii got really bad, Las Vegas got really bad, and there was just no work. It was the third recession that I'd been through in my building career. So I, I retired from that, I moved to, my family and I moved to Henderson. We bought a pest control company and.
From ball building to pest control?
Yeah, it was a whole different, whole different ball game for me.
That's a stretch.
Yeah, no, my dad lived in Boulder City and, um, he said it's a good business here. And quite frankly, I was kinda tired of building. You know, the downturn, just, the good times are good, the bound, the down, the down times are really bad. So it was bad and I bought a pest control company that I thought was doing pretty good. I found out later it was failing.
What was the name?
Mountain View Pest Control. Found out later.
In, in Boulder City?
No, it was in Henderson.
It was in Henderson?
Yeah, well, he, uh, the guy bought it from me, it was Las Vegas. And we, so we'd serve all of Las Vegas and Henderson, the whole valley, Boulder City and everywhere.
How many trucks do you have?
I have four. We're a small company.
Okay.
So I turned it around, uh, you know, we're pretty successful.
You guys watered down your pest control stuff.
Oh yeah, we water everything down. Heck no, we don't do that.
I'll call you up tomorrow. I still see a roach. What's going on?
We can take care of that roach for you, not a problem.
Yeah. Freaks in the choir when it comes to pest control.
I can't stand bugs. Yeah, I see one in my house, we need to just fumigate the whole thing.
You're my perfect customer.
I know, fumigate this whole thing.
We can take care of all of that.
And if I see a rat, bring a gun.
Wow, that's pretty heavy, you got.
Cause I'm not gonna get rabies.
Yeah, no, no, we, we can take care of all that for you if you want.
Do you still have the pest control?
Yeah, yeah, I still run that, that's my, that's my job.
Do you take care of rats?
Yes, we do.
Cause my neighbor has some.
He does?
Yeah.
We can take care of rats, there's a lot of rats in our government these days too.
He's gonna poison them. Is that how you handle the rats?
Well, that's how we handle our, the rodents that we have, you know, the rats, those other rats you have to take care of.
Oh, you still gotta, oh, you want us to take care of? All right, please continue.
So anyway, I've been married to my wife for almost 20 years together. We have, um, eight daughters and two sons.
Oh my gosh.
Isn't that awesome?
How old? This is before you left Hawaii?
No, 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 we, we lived in Orem, we took my family, we took six of our kids to Hawaii.
Okay.
And they, we were there for three years.
Where were you before Hawaii?
Orem, Utah.
Orem, Utah, I know exactly, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Orem's that, that's where my.
Are you LDS?
I am.
Yep. Trump's right. You said eight kids, I was like going on that level, I'm like, oh.
So you, so you're plus three on the Lippens test, right?
Probably.
You gotta have five.
Yeah, so it's all good.
I'm just, yeah, five, oh, five is the minimum.
Right, it is, exactly. Oh, it's all good, I love all my, I love all my kids, my daughters are special.
How many daughters do you have?
I have, uh, between, between my wife and I, so Melissa isn't my first marriage. So between my wife and I, we have, there's eight daughters.
You can't take multiple wives in Utah?
No, 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 no. What is up with that?
So. I gotta have a little fun on these shows.
That's great, I, I'm here for the prodding, so let's do it.
And plus, you know, it's, it's good to kinda poke the candidate, to see, see what comes out of their mouth.
I hope it's all good. Two of my kids have passed away.
In my condolences.
Yeah, it's already.
How old?
Um, one, Jeff, he was 30-ish and, uh, he was an alcoholic. He passed away a year ago, a year ago in November.
Was it liver or kidney?
He was, he actually fell, hit his head and, uh, had a, you know, had a contusion back there and that killed him.
Thirty, how old?
He was 35.
Oh boy. Kids, married?
Yes, uh, kids, married, divorced, two kids.
Sorry.
Yeah. My daughter Cassandra, um, she passed away five years ago. She was hit, she was crossing the street, uh, not in a crosswalk and was hit by a car, killed her.
Was it a drunk driver?
We don't know.
He left the scene or she left the scene?
Well, let me rephrase, he was not a drunk driver, I believe he was a distracted driver. I'm, I'm real big into, you know, not, no distracted driving, pay attention to your driver. I believe that's what cost my daughter her life.
How old was?
Uh, she was 27.
What was your son's name?
Jeff, daughter named Cassandra.
Cassandra, so sorry.
My daughter had a rough life, she was, she was, uh, she had, took some drugs. She got into a lot of things.
What type?
Uh, her was, her favorite one was the, I believe they're called IR-30s.
What, what is that?
It's a, it's a narcotic, it's an opiate, it's a pill. And, um, she was into that. She had a rough life, she was, she was, we moved, after we moved here, she was trafficked.
Oh.
I mean, it was, it was just a really sad situation, so I don't know how much of that you wanna get into.
No, 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 we could get into it, whatever you're comfortable with.
Actually, I actually, um, I went to an event, uh, there's, the, a couple of the councilwomen in Las Vegas put on events uh, about human trafficking, they're doing one in, in Centennial area next month.
That's where I live.
It is? Well, you should go. It, they're really.
Send me the info.
I'll send you the info. They're really good, they're really good, I went to one, uh, Carrie Cox asked me to go to one last month and I went and I didn't know, really know what it was about. And they start talking about human trafficking and, and girls and stuff and that's my daughter, that's what happened to her, she.
Any kids?
She had three, three kids.
Oh.
Yeah.
Husband?
They were boyfriend, girlfriend, they were living together, but they weren't, uh, they weren't married.
Are you taking care of all your grandbabies?
My kids are now, they're with their, their other grandma, uh, up in Utah. And they're, you know, they're in good shape, they're, they're good kids.
I'm so sorry, let's take a moment of silence for this.
Absolutely.
Mr. Squires?
Thank you, I, I appreciate, I really appreciate that. So.
It's unnatural for parents.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it's not, it's not fun, but.
I could only imagine what you must have, you and your wife, your whole family must have.
Yeah, it was, it was sad, so.
How, how long before the two, two, um, of your children expire, how long before?
Cassandra was five years ago and Jeff was last year.
Ah.
So. So needless to say, I, I'm a really big supporter of the police, the laws, the sentences that they give to people. You know, the girls, the girls, well, I, I can't speak for all the girls, but my daughter was, she was groomed. She was groomed by, by a person and, and trafficked and it was a really bad situation.
Was she homeless?
No, she was not homeless.
She was living on her own?
With us, and then she, she wanted to move into an apartment, so we moved her into an apartment. And it was there that she met this person and, and the grooming started and it's real, this grooming is real.
Oh yeah.
I, I, I just don't, I didn't really realize what happened until I started thinking about it later. And, um, I, I had to go get her out of that. I went to, one of her friends called me and said, Alan, I know where she's at. Cause I didn't know where she was. And they called me and they said, Alan, I know where she's at. And I went down and it was in a, kind of a ratty place in downtown Las Vegas and and he said, don't go there, he said, if you go in there, they will shoot you. But I had to go.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I had to go, so I got down there and I called her and she wouldn't answer her phone and I'm watching this building from the sidewalk and, and I see my grandson walking down the, uh, you know, the plankway, wherever the, the outside entrances, it was on the second floor. And I called her again, I finally got a hold of her and she came out on the balcony and I was talking to her, I could see her. And it took me about an hour and I got her to come out and was able to take her home and, you know, we got her in good shape, so. Later, you know, these other things happened and, and.
That, having those types of, um, um, life experience really alters.
It does.
Your mind of how you perceive life.
It, it gives you, it gives you.
A perspective.
A new perspective, that's it exactly, of how you look at people, how you look at people's problems. What you accept and what you don't, um, what you can forgive and what you can't.
And also, um, measures your tolerance level.
Yeah.
Cause when you experience stuff like that, you don't really have too much of a high tolerance for bullshit.
Well, that's true.
Because you must have went through the coroner and the police report and the coroner's report and people talking to you and this and that and that and this, I, I buried a lot of friends.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm sure.
And, and in April, my brother was murdered.
Oh my goodness, I'm so sorry.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Well, it's one of those things and just to pivot real quick, one of, one of the things that, and I appreciate Steve so much for this is I know we're getting kind of into personal stuff with you. But one of the things that we have always strived for here at Veterans in Politics is to, we want to get the background of the candidate and like what they've went through, more than just, and we're gonna get into policy things later, but more of like what makes you tick.
Right.
And so that's why, and if we got a little personal, no disrespect, but we, we want to understand like what you've went through in your life, what motivates you and like, that's what, for Steve and I, we both have, and I'm not putting words in his mouth and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but what makes someone tick? Like, what's your background, what have you been through? Like, why are you doing what you're doing, why are you running for office? It's more than just like policy, like, we, Steve and I have heard this for years. Well, well, we want lower taxes, lesser government. And Steve and I both, and I think I can speak pretty clearly for Steve on this, we want lower taxes. We're bold for that, but like what, what makes a person tick?
Yeah. And, and when you find out what a person, what makes a person tick, you also find out what their bias is.
Right, true, 100%.
Yeah. And you learn there real quick.
Right.
I have a lot of life experiences and I've, I've been a lot of, learned a lot from my life experiences, you know, including this one, so.
Please continue with your bio.
I forgot where I was.
Um, you're, you're.
I interrupted you.
You're two children.
You're two children. Yeah, so I have, uh, my children, um.
How many grandchildren?
I have eight, eight grandchildren.
Oh, okay.
So that's good, they're all good, they're, I have, and then I have a, uh, what my youngest daughter is expecting, she's due another month, so.
Oh, see?
Isn't that awesome?
Yeah, absolutely. Enjoy.
Yeah, we're happy, we're happy about that.
All your children here in?
No, 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 I, she's in Arizona, I have, I have kids in Utah, I have kids here, um, San Diego. I have a daughter down there.
And what brought you to Nevada 15 years ago?
My pest control, my dad, my dad lived in Boulder City, right, so, so I, I have, I mean, you want life experiences, I have two dads. I have, I have my natural father, um, who was my birth father, that's who I'm talking about, lived in Boulder City. I have the father who raised me.
I, I got the same issue.
He's my dad.
Well, it's not really an issue sometimes, it could be a blessing, right?
Yeah, no, it is a blessing, I mean, I, I learned a lot, I have, I have, uh, uh, my personality comes from my birth father. My.
Can't get away from that.
Compassion comes from my father. And he raised me since I was two and he's my dad, you know, that's who I call my dad.
Absolutely.
He raised me since I was two, very compassionate man. We don't think a lot alike, but I've learned so much from him.
Got a lot of respect.
I have just.
A lot of love.
Lot of love for him.
Yes.
He was a teacher, uh, started at, you know, in the, in junior high school, ended up a professor at BYU. And, uh, yeah, I just love him to death, he's eight, just turned 89.
Bless his life.
Just a great, great.
Strong?
Strong, yeah. Yeah, good guy, so.
Please.
My mom's 88, she's.
Mom's 88 too.
So both my parents were in education, uh, my mom, my mom retired from education when she, uh, shortly after she married my dad, um, to have children, I have seven, there's seven of us uh, in my family.
Siblings?
Seven, yeah, there's me and six others, there's seven siblings. And my dad was a teacher, I know the plight of teachers, it just breaks my heart to see what we do to our teachers and what we pay them and what we put them through. Because I was raised in that, in that, with that.
Speaking of that, while we talk a little about education, I could throw a little policy in this one.
Okay.
Cause I might forget. Um, so what do you think about breaking up the Clark County School District and Henderson have their own, um?
I'm all for it, I think Henderson have their own school district. Yeah, we're, we're big, I mean, we're not big, we're, you know, we're a good sized city, we have, you know, 300 and some odd thousand people, last time I checked. We need our own school district, the state, I think, Kerry was telling me, the state has okayed us to have, uh, start that with charter schools, not exactly sure about that, but that's what I think happened.
It's a start.
It's a start, right, it's right, but we, we should have our own school district in Henderson, Henderson City.
I think so.
I do too, I mean, it's just, it's just the natural way to go. There's just too much, too much other stuff that goes on, uh, in the Clark County School District. And I don't get involved in those politics, so I don't know everything. But I do have many, many friends who are teachers in the, in the Clark County School District, in the Henderson area.
So your, your parents were educators?
Parents were educators.
Okay.
My dad was actually a teacher at the junior high school I went to, before he moved on to Brigham Young University, that was kind of awkward.
That must be a huge promotion right there, right? From the junior high school to Brigham Young?
Yeah. Yeah, he, he did that, he did, he got that, he, he worked in, his, his primary focus was secondary education. So he taught school teachers how to teach.
Beautiful.
That was, uh, that was his thing.
What about your educational background?
So I, uh, I learned early in my life that school was not my 4K.
Okay.
Uh, I did graduate from high school, I went to a year, uh, not a year, a semester at BYU. And I just, I just, school wasn't for me. So I went to work for a general contractor, four years later, I got my general contractor's license, went into business for myself. I've been self-employed.
Do you still have that general contractor's license?
I, I have it, I have two general contractors licenses, I'm licensed in Utah and Hawaii, not here, not here. Um, I'm, I am licensed in my pest, for my pest control company and I'm a licensed, um, uh, built home inspector.
Okay.
So I have that license, I'm not currently using that, um, I thought I might wanna do that, decided that, that I didn't want to, so.
So if I need a general contractor, a little bit of advice, you can give it to me?
I can give you advice. I can't legally build something for you.
Got it.
But I wouldn't do that.
You could steer me in the right direction, but I know about building, yes.
Right, right, right.
I mean, it's all the same.
Yeah, no, it's not all the same.
I mean, the rules are different?
Oh yeah, the rules are different, rules are very different.
But generalized?
Generalized, you know, a house is made of two by fours.
Gotcha.
And two by sixes, you know, studs and joists and trusses and all, nails and all those good things, concrete.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, let me ask you this question, let me pivot on this one, since you're.
Sure.
That's experienced in general contracting, one of the things that I brought up in front of the Las Vegas City Council was permits.
Okay.
Permits is one of the things, and I'm not asking you to like.
I have an experience with permits.
Like, give me a specific, uh, answer to where we can answer all this. But one of the things that if you were elected to, when you're elected to the Henderson City.
When is a good word?
Yep.
Yes.
One of the things that frustrates me, and Steve and I have experienced this in depthly, is it doesn't seem to make any sense to me that there's one code in North Las Vegas, there's one code in Las Vegas, there's one code in the county.
Yeah.
And it's like, we're, and there's one code in Boulder City, so like, we're all a valley. If you were elected to Henderson City Council, would you push to get it to where the codes are the same in Henderson? Las Vegas?
Yeah.
Yeah. Unincorp, uh, I'm, what do they call it?
Unincorp, Clark County?
Clark County and North Las Vegas.
Yeah, so.
Would you work across the line on that because it's so annoying, because Steve and I, when we're building this fence, we get a contractor, he builds it to the county code, not the city code. So then we have to have a get, get it readjusted because the city says it has to be four inches. The county says six.
Yeah.
So he builds it at six and then when they come out and inspect it, they're like, it's too deep. So they wanted us to rebuild it again, because it, it, which to me just completely flabbergasted being like, well, it's six inches, so it's actually more structural.
It's better, right, right, yeah. So I, I believe that, to answer your question, I believe that, that the, the building code, uniform building code should be adopted equally across the whole valley, it would be much easier for everybody.
Yeah.
Um, I do know that, that Henderson's, I, I just finished last week obtaining a building permit for my house.
Yeah, how long did that take?
Oh, forever.
What is this?
This is one of the things that I would love to find out, is why it takes so long. It shouldn't take this long, there is so much red tape.
How long is too long?
I was held up, I was held up for almost a month by one line on my plan. One line that they wanted drawn a certain way with a dash and a dot, not a dash and two dots. It was crazy for two weeks, why does it take so long, it's, it's the bureaucracy that's, that we have in Henderson City. That needs to be looked at and that needs to be fixed, it should not take that long.
How long is too long?
Um, anything over probably a month is too long. And I spent, I think, four, getting it? Cause you just wait, you wait for them. So, um, I have a good friend who's a retired building inspector, he's been telling me about the process more. So as I've been going through this, he's been telling me about the process to get a permit and what, and what to do. And I've learned a lot doing that and working with Henderson City. And that's one of the things I'd like to do at some point, uh, when I get elected is, is to maybe streamline that a little bit more for the builders. It just would be much, it would be easier for you guys, it'd be better for everybody.
Yeah.
That could do that.
Yeah, because that's why, I mean, Steve and I, I'm not gonna keep beating that same drum, but yeah. Steve and I have been going through it forever and it's like, it, it just takes so long.
That's why people skip permits and just do the doggone job themselves. Yeah, you don't wanna do that, you'll be in big trouble.
Yeah.
I bought a building about 10 years ago, a commercial building, and the guy I bought it from had built a, had like a 20 foot high ceiling. Halfway up, you build a platform, it's like the whole length of it. When you went to sell it.
Nice.
The, the city man tore it out.
Really?
His option was tear it out or get it permitted, it would have cost more to get it permitted than tear it out. So he tore it out and he lost.
That's just dumb.
I didn't, yeah. I, I agree, I totally agree. So I have a belief, I mean, I have a belief, I believe there's good, better and best. Let's take the good and make it better, and let's take the better and make it the best. And that's what we need to do with some of these policies and things that, that we do, the building department is one of them. And there's lots of things that are really good and Henderson's a great place to live and I love living there. Let's make it better, let's improve it, let's make it the best.
Okay, so why are you running for this seat and what makes you qualify?
So, I, I don't have a political background and I, actually I think that's one of the things that does make me qualified. Is I don't have a political background.
A lot of people run and they don't have a political background.
That's a good thing.
Donald Trump, you know.
That's a good thing too, we'll clap, we'll clap what good things he did for our country. You know, look at Ronald Reagan, you know, no political background.
He was a governor first.
Well, that's true, but before he was a governor, he wasn't.
No, that's true.
Right?
Well, he ran the Screen Actors Guild.
Okay, all right, so he wasn't political.
Hey, he's one of my political heroes, so I'm not bashing Reagan.
Yeah, no, don't worry, so my, 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 uh, background is business. I have my general contracting business, I had a, I, I had a small chain of tanning salons for a while. I had a small chain of pizza stores for a while, that, that I ran and.
Are you Italian?
I am not Italian.
What you know about making pizza?
Not much. It's the people that I had running it for me that made it, that made it good.
They say, they say the best pizza.
Yeah.[1738.47]
Is New York water.
There's no question about it. I used to live in.
New York water to make the pizza.
So one of the things, okay, let's talk about New York. One of the things I used to do in my building career, so my background is business, building. And one of the things that I used to do in my, early in my career was, uh remember I mentioned that we started that I've been through three recessions in my in my building career? The first one I went through was horrible. We decided that we need to have a have a gimmick to build houses. We were building in Utah. So we build a house, I build a house, the first year in forty eight hours, start to finish. From a flat piece of ground, the next year.
Who did your permits?
Well, that was Springville City. They made a great job. The next year, we build a house in Orem in thirty six hours. Flat piece of ground, just like this.
Wow.
Full basement, which we don't have here basements. Full basement.
Thirty six hours?
Thirty six hours. We started, one day, we finished up thirty six hours later with our final inspection.
With a basement.
It was actually thirty six hours and twenty minutes to be.
Did the inspector just live on?
Inspector lived on the site. We engineered the concrete, we built the thing. And what happened, you guys, is um we got noticed by the national media. I had a guy come to our company and he said, I need you to build some condos. We went into the next town over, Provo, and we built a hundred and twenty condos in sixty working days.
Wow.
That got written up all across the nation.
Two story?
In the papers, three story.
Three story?
Three story buildings. Got written up across the nation in papers. People started calling us. For the next few years, I traveled around the country helping builders who were in trouble build their projects. And I did that, uh I spent some time in, you know, different places, and I ended up in New York, right outside of New York City. And I built a three hundred and some odd unit condo project out there. And I liked it, and I lived out there. And I stayed there after I, after I got this guy squared away. And I spent about ten years out there building houses. And so, back to the pizza. See, this is where this is headed, to the pizza. Pizza's great.
So I've got New York water?
It's the New York water.
New York water that makes it great.
Yeah, there is a pizza store in uh in Henderson that has really good pizza, very close to New York pizza.
Oh, yeah?
Can I tell you about it?
So?
Anthony's. Anthony's on Horizon Ridge. Don't know if you guys have been there?
No, I haven't been there. I know where it's at, though. I know what you're talking about.
Fantastic pizza.
I've never been there, no.
Good guy. Good guy, fantastic pizza. Go try him out.
Anthony's out there. There is a place on uh West West Cheyenne in Buffalo. I believe it's called Sombrero's. It's it's the little food court they got over there.
Yeah.
And they have really, really good pizzas. That's where, oh, sorry, Sabatino's.
Sabatino's.
Sabatino's, yeah. Really good pizza.
You text me the address, we'll go and try it out.
All right.
We love New York pizza.
And then we go try your spot.
Exactly. Let's go do them all. The neat thing about New York is not, I'm not talking about the.
But I'm on a low carb diet, or no carb diet, actually.
I don't know if I can.
I might have to have a cheat cheat day.
Let's do a cheat day. The great thing about living in the New York area is they have all these great delis. You go into these delis and they, you know, they're just these old, old buildings. You go in, they have all this food. It's fresh, just incredible.
Yeah, I love it. So so let's talk about buffers. What do you know about that?
I don't know about anything on buffers.
Because the purpose of the city council is why, is safety of residents, right? Responsible growth.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
And uh um you have to make sure that you have, well, when it comes to safety, you gotta make sure you have EMT, you have to make sure you have lease and hospitals and stuff of that nature.
Yep.
And then when it comes to responsible growth, you have to make sure you have the infrastructure and and the and the land to do it and 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 make sure that it's it's it's, you don't have, put a commercial building
Yeah.
in in the residential neighborhood or put a gas station right in the middle of cul-de-sac and and stuff like that, so.
That's why they have zoning.
So did I miss anything else?
Well, no, there's, that's why we have the zoning with the different, you know, zones.
And the buffer.
And that's why you have the buffer, where you have your freeway, then you have multifamily, and then you have the less density and, you know, things.
What do you know about buffers?
Well, that's about all I know. No, the buffers are, I mean, the buffers are good. You have to have, you have to have, specifically in zoning, you have, you don't wanna the the tendency now is not to build a single family home up against a freeway. To have your higher density, your commercial in those areas.
So you guys have a, you guys have a master plan?
There is a master plan, yes.
What do you think about when when somebody actually purchased their home because of the master plan and and they said, and they said, okay, and they go to the county or or the city and they say, okay, all this residential land, we're gonna put um luxury homes there.
Yep.
And then you buy your house down the street and 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 a couple of years later, it's not luxury homes anymore.
Yeah.
You 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 got a whole commercial development.
Yeah, it's wrong. It's wrong. We shouldn't do that to the people.
What do you think they'd do that?
Money.
Okay.
The the developers want the ground. The ground, you know, is worth a lot of money and 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 you make more money with higher density.
Okay.
That's just how it is. So they, um I don't know specifically what project you're talking about, but I have a friend in um he passed away, but I have a friend in the southern part of Las Vegas who that exact thing happened to. He built a house on an acre lot. Whole surrounding area was acre lots. And that's what it was supposed to be in the master plan. Builders came in, uh talked to the city council. They rezoned it to a different zoning, and they're building thousands of houses out there. And he's pretty upset. He was upset. He's no longer with us.
So in in the city of Henderson, is there room for much growth out there? Or is there any um BLM land that's laying around that hasn't been um sold to the city?
I I don't know about BLM land. There is room for growth. I had somebody talk to me, yes, two days ago, uh from Boulder City who who wanted a buffer from Henderson, between Henderson and Boulder City. Boulder City's trying to, you know, keep development you know, under control, and they they like to be a little bit different than the rest of us, which is great. Boulder City's a great place, but they were they were concerned about the uh all the warehouse space going in uh out there on the new, the new highway. You know, it turns where the eleven is.
So what do you think about um the city donating land to the Raiders and the Raiders end up saying thank you very much and then sell it for millions of dollars?
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that stuff. I I think that.
Shouldn't there be some type of contract that says you can't sell to a third party if we're donating it to you?
Yeah, we're giving it to you, of course. You know, that doesn't make sense to do that. So Hen- Henderson needs, Henderson's addicted to growth. Our tax base is from growth. Yeah, but you don't donate and and then let that person sell it and make a profit out of it. That's that's not right. No, you don't do that.
Ripping the people off.
Well, yeah, it is. It's giving, it's giving away our assets.
Yeah, so to, excuse me, just piggyback on what Steve was saying. So as a city councilman in Henderson.
Yeah.
Would you be, and 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 I know that you're only one vote on the city council, and I understand that, so you you're you're not the judge and jury of everything, but would you voice your opinion on one of the things that frustrates me as city, the city manager runs the town?
Yeah, right.
I mean, basically, and you're just one vote. And obviously, the mayor has a bully pulpit because she's a mayor. Would you push back on the fact that, like, sometimes I get frustrated with these city managers? I think they levy too much control.
Yeah, no, I agree. And so, so here's the thing. When I get elected, now you have two votes, cause you have Kerry Cox and myself are on the same page. So now you have two votes. We need one more, and we have three. Now we have a majority.
Now we have.
Okay? And then we can do the right thing for the people of Henderson.
Right.
And that's, that's why I'm here. I went and spoke in front of the city council when they, there was a a matter that I was concerned about. They had a public hearing, and I went and spoke at their meeting. I was the first speaker. And it was, it was, it was quite an experience for me. Uh I, have you ever been to the Henderson City Council Room? I felt like that I was a pawn in the Queen's court. Have you, you know how the building is situated? That your chairs come down, they have a higher platform for the workers. They have a higher platform for the rulers.
Right.
It's not okay. It's not okay to be that. It's not okay to be a ruler in your city.
Right.
You're supposed to speak for the people. That city council that sat up there, not one of them smiled at me. They had on these these gruff faces. I think they listened, but they didn't care. They had their minds made up before me or any of the other people spoke. They had their minds made up how they were gonna vote. And that's how they voted. And that's not right. You should, the public should be able to go in there and voice their opinions and and not have the city council have their mind made up based on what they want to do. That's just not okay.
So I know you're gonna, I know how you're gonna answer this question, and it it's perfectly okay. I get it. Like, okay, so hypothetical situation. Everybody always, and everybody has a mind made up, how how they're gonna vote on a specific agenda.
Yeah.
You're sitting there, opening it up to public comment.
Okay.
Steve Sanson comes up.
Yep.
And he makes a very compelling argument, cause he's very, he he knows his stuff, right? Or it, me coming up there.
Yeah.
And so you already have the vote in place, like, we're gonna vote yes or no on this.
Right.
But then all of a sudden, Steve or I come up.
Yeah.
And it's like, wow, never thought about that. Maybe I should really think that. And then before you guys vote, like, he he or she made a really good point on this. Maybe we should rethink this. Would you be willing to push back on other council members and go?
Absolutely.
Maybe we should, maybe we should change our vote.
Absolutely. So what I I have, I didn't ask the council to vote no.
Right.
I asked them for, maybe delay this for thirty days till the next meeting, so we could study a little bit more, because they did this. They didn't really do it, you know, upfront.
Right.
We hadn't heard about it, you know, maybe there were some rumors, but my group hadn't heard about it. And transparency, transparency is a big issue in the Henderson City Council. They do everything behind closed doors. They bring it out in public for a very short period of time, and they vote on it. They have their minds made up. Absolutely, I would, I would push back. No question about it. Is that how you knew I was gonna answer? Is that what you thought I was gonna answer?
No, I, yeah, I just figured, well, of course I'm gonna listen to it. But I do also understand, and just to be fair, I do also understand that sometimes, like, Steve and I, Steve more than me, but we've been to many city council meetings, whether it's Henderson, North Las Vegas, Las Vegas.
North Las Vegas, Boulder.
Yeah, county commission meetings, and there are sometimes I do kinda get, I'm just like, what in the hell is this person talking about? So sometimes public comment, you're just kinda like.
There's, there's the crazies.
Tune out.
Yeah, there's the crazies. I agree. I'm not, I wasn't one of those. I made a compelling point. So at least I thought I did. Maybe I was one of the crazies.
I wanna, I wanna talk to you about some current events that's recent.
Okay.
So the Nevada Association of Public Safety Officers.
Okay.
sued the Review Journal uh because of um apparently they wanted to show, the Review Journal wanted to show videos of of officers or 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 those um jail officers.
Yeah.
Doing this deeds.
Yeah.
And then the city of Henderson decided to jump on the bandwagon and say, oh my God, yeah, let's sue the Review Journal. But now the anti-slapp comment came in because it was a First Amendment violation.
Yeah.
And now the city of Henderson has to pay twenty thousand dollars to cover the uh Review Journal's um lawyer fees.
Okay.
So what what do you, what do you feel about that? Do you, do you think that if if uh let me, let me, let me just try to, my point of view, if 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 you're getting paid by tax dollars, your face should be everywhere if you're doing something good, bad, or indifferent.
I agree.
What do you think about that?
I totally agree with that. I, the the tax dollars are not my money. They're the people's money. They should be spent responsibly. And and we shouldn't be swandering those dollars away, you know, those, we all pay taxes.
Do you think that the police officer's face should not be altered, the one that was doing the bad deeds in the jail? They get paid by tax dollars as well.
I believe in accountability.
So you believe in transparency?
I believe in transparency.
Okay, because if the city of Henderson then jump on that bandwagon and think that that was a good case by the the um was it Nevada Association of Public Safety Officers?
Yeah.
They they wouldn't cost taxpayers twenty grand to pay Review Journal's.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know how far that that's, that opinion's gonna get me with the police officers, but I I don't like bad thoughts.
Okay.
I I mean, I believe in honesty straight across the board, you know.
Before you say something.
Yeah.
Didn't Henderson go through a few police chiefs recently, like a handful of them?
Yes, they did. They did.
They couldn't get it right.
The one we have now is amazing. She is amazing. I've met her and talked to her.
What's her name?
I don't know her name. I forgot. I'm sorry about that. I can see her face. I don't remember her name.
Um and what were, what were you gonna say before I I kind of?
So I, oh, what I was gonna say was about about accountability. Everybody makes a mistake. I do them all the time. I just made a mistake by not knowing our police chief's name. That's bad, okay? That's really bad.
At least you could admit it.
But you know something, if if I do something wrong, you know, call me on the carpet.
That's right. So um what about judges? And the reason I'm gonna bring up judges is because when there's a vacancy.
Yeah.
The city of Henderson either appoints or they appoint, and then and then I believe that that a appointee runs for retention.
Yeah.
On the next election year.
I.
So if if that case came up and 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 you're now before a bunch of candidates that wanna run for, that wanna um um sit in um Bateman's seat or Judge Burr or Judge Stevens seat, or, no, not Stevens, he's gone, or or Judge George's seat, or, and I said George.
George, I know him.
Gibson's seat, or whatever. What 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 do you look for in 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 a candidate um that that uh runs for judge?
So I think, I think, I know, um, you know, Judge Hedger?
Hedger, yeah, Mark Hedger, yes.
Doug Hedger.
Was it Doug? Jesus.
I remembered his name.
I'm messing him up with Mark Stevens. He retired.
He retired.
Yes.
He's a friend of mine. You look for people with integrity, that know the law, and that can, and that can uphold our constitution. That's who we need in those offices. I think that when we vote, and I'm not speaking for everybody, but I think that a lot of people, when they vote, they don't do their research on who these judges are.
Oh, definitely. I can, I can tell you they don't.
And they just check a box, you know? Holly Chadwick, that's the ma, that's the police chief, Holly Chadwick.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now you're not gonna forget.
I owe her an apology.
Holly Chadwick.
It's okay. Uh so one of the things that I just like to kind of lighten it up just a little bit. One of the things, just a real general question, like, it, running for office is very tough.
Yeah.
So you you get, you come on shows like this and and obviously, you know, when you meet Steve Sanson, like, he's gonna know who the sheriff is, he's gonna know every judge, like, he's been doing this a long time.
Yeah.
And I basically just ask him a lot of questions, and he's a good mentor to me, but so it it's difficult, it's challenging to be interviewed by people, so what makes you willing to put yourself out there like that? Cause you're exposing yourself quite a bit. Not saying you're doing a bad job with the interview by any stretch.
Yeah.
Just saying like, you're, like, you're putting your personal life out there and
Yeah.
it's hard, and you gotta raise a lot of money, and you gotta try to persuade people and.
Yeah. So this is my first interview. I I only recently firmed up my decision to run, so you guys, you're my first interview, so.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah.
But I just, as I thought about, I was approached to run. It wasn't my idea. Okay, I didn't have a desire to be a Henderson City Council.
Now, what do you got that somebody would say, hey, I can give you a good city council?
What do I what?
What do you have? So I mean, what do you, what do you bring to the table?
Right.
Pipe of gum, what?
I have a pack of gum. You know, they ask me because I'm a good businessman. I understand budgets. I understand.
Then you did business bankrupt?
No, no. However, I did have a house, a very large house that I needed to put in bankruptcy protection at one time for a little bit before I sold it, so I did do that. And we're talking, everything's out on the table, right?
There is.
So I did do that. That was a long time ago, and I ended up selling it and everything.
Some people fact check their shows.
Yeah, go ahead, fact check. Fact check it, go ahead. That's what happened. But I just, I just started thinking about the experience I had in front of the city council.
Right.
I started looking at at, you know, who these guys were and and realized that, you know, I've got some good experience. I have some good, we talked about life experiences. I have some good life experiences. I want to have, be able to have a citizen come to me and we can talk, and I can hear them. It really. It really bothered me that they didn't, they didn't listen to what I had to say, so that's number one. Number two. I have good business experience, I understand budgets, I understand pressures, I understand getting things done on time. I have a friend of mine who works for Henderson City. And I looked at him one day and I said, I'm not gonna tell you his name. I said, you know, if I ran my business like that, I would be bankrupt. He said, Alan. They don't give us deadlines. We go out, we work, whatever we get done is what we get done. And if we don't get done, we do it the next day.
That needs to change.
It, and it needs to change, I can't tell you how much it needs to change.
Cause it creates laziness.
Yeah, and, and, and. My friend isn't lazy, he goes out and he works and does a fantastic job. And, and most of the, the people do do.
But there's no sense of urgency when you don't have a deadline.
Sense of urgency, that's exactly what I was gonna say.
I'm not calling the, the people that work, you know, in all these different things lazy, I'm not doing that. What I'm saying is.
Back to leadership.
Maybe we can do a little more proficient, you know, cause I, I, I like these guys, love these guys, they, they go out and they work every single day. And they work their butts off to make a living. So.
So what do you expect out of a city council person?
I expect a city council person to. Run the city. Like the citizens want it run. For example. They've, the city council has approved a twenty story building. On the corner of, I believe it's Water and Lake Mead. A twenty story building. You know how tall that is? It's like two hundred feet tall. You know, ten feet a story? Well, you know what ISO that's gonna be?
Yeah.
We need a height limit. We need a height limit. You don't.
There's no height restriction? I, I thought there was a height restriction in Henderson.
Only by the airport.
Well, they're going up twenty, there, there is by the airport. They're going up twenty stories, so it's, it's. It's. Not twenty stories. That's not responsible. There's a developer, and I don't know a lot about this, okay, I just know what I've been told. But there's a developer that, you know, has gone in and made a deal and they, they agreed to build this twenty story building.
So is water ever an issue?
Water is always an issue. Oh, yeah, of course. Of course, I built, I built a project here, gosh, we're back in. In the eighties and water was an issue, they were gonna shut down building because there was no water. You can see what's happened since that. They found water.
So what, 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 what do you? Plan to do with, is, is Boulder Highway, Boulder Highway is part of Henderson?
Yes, well, part of Boulder Highway is, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the part that's Henderson, that comes up to Water Street, there's certain areas. What, what do you guys plan to do with the homeless issue that's?
I know a lot about the homeless issue.
Well, please.
I'm on the board of, of Friends in the Desert, we feed the homeless. The.
Did you mention that in your bio?
No, we didn't get that far.
Oh.
Well, we were pretty good in there.
Yeah, I was gonna say. What, what, I, I probably interrupted.
What, what, what boards elaborate? Do you, are you a member of?
So I'm, I'm only, right now, I'm currently a member of the board of Friends in the Desert, that is the only.
For homeless.
The only one for that.
Prior to that, what, what did you sit on?
Um, I, I haven't sat on, on boards, I, I, I've tried to.
Okay, not even a real estate board?
I've tried to keep my life pretty private until now.
Until now?
Yeah. So, you know, you can call that good or you can call that bad, but um. Uh, again, I was asked to be on the board of Friends in the Desert.
Why is that?
Um. Uh, I spent some time volunteering there with my church.
Okay.
And. Do you know what Friends in the Desert is?
Please tell us.
We, we feed homeless people, whoever comes. Usually it's between seventy and a hundred people.
You got your own structure?
We work out of the Saint Timothy's Church in downtown Henderson, they, they rent space to us. And we have different groups that come in every day of the week except Sunday. Sunday we give them a, Saturday we give them a sack lunch for Sunday and we feed a hot meal. To our friends who are homeless, I have a few hundred homeless friends. And I love those guys. They're regular people, they're still God's children. And they're just less fortunate than we are. There's issues, they have issues, they have alcoholism, they have drugs, they have mental. That there's reasons why they're homeless and why they can't function in society. We. As a society, need to try and help.
Some of them just don't have any job.
So they need jobs, exactly. They need jobs. There's, there's, I, I talk to people all the time. I need a job. Some of them can't hold a job, they have addictions, you know, and they can't do that. But we need to, we need to find a viable solution. For our homeless population and it needs to work for everybody.
And what do you think is a viable solution? Just feeding them um won't, won't, won't work, you, you know that, that biblical. Um saying, um if, if you, if you teach a man how to fish.
Right.
He could eat for the rest of his life, but if you just give him a fish, he's gonna eat for one day.
Right. So we, we do some outreach things, we have, we have Tuero, the medical school that comes over and.
On that Shelly Berkeley was CEO.
Yeah. We have uh. Um, different groups, you know, that come in and they try and help our, and provide services for, for our people. Um, we provide some transportation for them so they can go to job interviews and doctor's appointments and things like that. We're not big enough to, to train people, you know, to go out and get jobs. Our charter is, is pretty specific. And everybody that, we, we have two employees that draw a very, very small salary, salary. Everybody else is volunteer, we're a volunteer organization.
So if somebody came up to you, Mr. Squires and said.
You call me Alan, my dad is Mr. Squires.
Alan.
Okay.
And said, um. If you could think of one thing. That's, that's the worst thing in Henderson. What would you say? And if you could think of one thing that's the best thing in Henderson, what would you say?
Wow. Wow, good question. The best thing is are the people that live there. People are awesome. We have, we have a great city, we, we have.
Unless you blow enough dynamite near their houses and crack their foundation, then they might get upset.
Well, yeah, I mean, everybody, everybody has a right. I remember that. So, so.
We could go on for hours.
So, so let's, I, I prefer not to get into the bad, I mean, I really believe in the good, better, best.
Well, the, the only way, the only way to, to, to even get any good, you have to find the bad.
Yeah.
And then, and then you have to fix it accordingly.
So, so the council, there's a, there's a, a proposal in to. Rejuvenate Boulder Highway, you were talking about Boulder Highway. And they wanna do some improvements there and they wanna cut the. Speed limit down to thirty-five miles an hour and they wanna, which isn't gonna work, but I mean, just, it's not gonna work to do that. So. I don't think that's a great idea.
You think maybe um, um lighten it up a little bit more might help? Um, maybe a little bit more police presence and get rid of a lot of the.
Yeah.
The street walkers over there might help?
Yeah, a little bit more, but, but, okay, so, yes.
How do I know that, Jim?
We definitely need more police presence, definitely.
We drove around Ward one, Henderson Ward one a few times, so we, we understand some of the challenges. My brother actually used to live there.
Yeah, we kinda like Water Street.
Yeah. Been there a few times.
Water Street's good, that's, they have some good businesses there, people. But um. Yes, police, see, that's one of the issues that we have, we're really understaffed in police. And so it's a problem because we're funded by growth.
Response timing is down.
Response plan is down. Uh, I, I read, I looked on a website, I mean.
Down or up, I don't know, whichever direction you wanna go with it.
Yeah, whatever duration you wanna go, but um. There's, there are some statistics out there that say if you're one in, I believe it was four hundred, you have a pretty good chance of. You know, uh, being assaulted and, you know, that sort of thing, but um, that's bad, you know, we need. I guess we're talking about the bad, we can improve that, we need to improve it by more police officers, more patrol. The problem is Henderson is fueled by houses, right? Houses bring taxes and so we're kind of addicted to development, to bring in more taxes to fund our city. The problem with that is. We need more business. Houses also require more police, so you're just kinda staying status quo. We need more businesses, more commercial uh tax dollars to come in so we can boost our. Our police presence, also in addition to that, our police force is very young. I'm sure you know that, they're very young, a lot of police officers.
Don't know the constitution, it's a shame.
They've left, dude, it was their season to have left. Um.
Lack of, lack of N O P training.
Friend of mine.
Anti slap them all.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Friend of mine's thirty-nine years old, he just left, he bought out his contract, cost him a lot of money, bought his contract out, retired early, he's gonna go do something else. Thirty-nine years old, retired, we need him. We need him to be a policeman on the streets. So we need more, we need to train better, we need to pay better, need, there's a step system that they give.
I thought they were the highest paid, no?
Not to my knowledge.
N H P was the lowest paid and Henderson PD was the highest paid.
Starting salaries are.
I thought they out surpassed Metro.
Yeah, I don't know those numbers. I don't know those numbers.
So one thing too also. That I wanted to bring up just real quick. I, well, first off, I'm gonna commend you for running for Ward one. But that's one of the, the things that, uh, talking with, uh, and Kerry is a good friend of ours.
Yeah.
One of the things that I've uh recognized about the Henderson City Council is.
Yeah.
Board one, they're just like. Basically, because, because Henderson is so on up on growth. That's not one of the major growth.
Cause there's nothing to grow in Ward one.
I'm building my house in Ward one.
How big is this lot?
Not that big.
Man, that's, it's just one of those things like I'm just like, I'm just asking you that general question because I'm like. Everybody's always like Ward one.
Yeah. Okay.
And, and that's unfortunate, I'm just like, but how can you change that mindset?
That they don't care?
Yeah, and like, and get them to start going like, hey, Ward one is important, like, let's. Yeah.
Do something. Ward one is important, Ward, Ward one is, is, is the downtown district, it's everything south of, of Lake, you know, Lake Mead.
Yeah.
And there is growth out there, I mean, that's where they're building those warehouses and all those kinds of stuff, so.
And I'm sure you're happy, Alan, that you, you could all, you don't have to run at large anymore, I mean, that, that, that's a lot of savings.
No, it's, it's, it's good that, that the voters of Ward one are gonna be the person voting for Ward one, that's a very, very good thing.
Before you used to have the right to large.
Did all.
That was absolutely a nightmare.
That's nuts to have to do that, I mean, the voters in the district should vote for the.
Exactly.
The people that are on.
Supposed to be. And they, they finally, they finally figured it out after all these years.
Yeah.
I know I was mentioning it years ago, what are you doing?
That's one of the good things that have happened, isn't it?
Yeah, that is one of the good things.
So I.
I forget the name.
You do know, you do know that my, my, the, the, the sitting councilman is up on ethics charges, right? Ethics violations.
Please explain. Yeah, okay, let's dive into that one.
You don't know that?
No, nobody gave us that memo.
Oh, yes, you guys know that.
Come on, tell us.
He's uh, he, he put out a flyer in the last election where he wore his uniform.
Oh, he pulled a, a Joe Lombardo.
Yeah, he did exactly.
And a Mark Robinson.
With a military, military uniform and a Tony Grady, Walter, Walter Grady with the military uniform and.
Yeah.
And what's the other, what's the other one, what's the other one, what's the, William Conrad with the military uniform?
It's like they can't, wo, wear a hat.
So he did that, they, they've, they've uh. From what I understand, and I'm not in the know on this, I just know what I've been told. Is it, that he's pretty much, he's trying to explain his way out of it, make excuses.
Of course.
Pretty normal, right? You know what happened to integrity, if you don't, if you do something, just come up and say you did it.
Is that why you run against him?
Can't people just take responsibility for what they do?
They can't, sometimes ego just jumps in the way.
I just, I, I don't understand that, you know, stand up, say you did it.
Be a man, is what you're saying.
Take your kick in the butt.
You're saying, be a man, tell them, be a man.
Be a man, take your kick in the butt and then let's, you know, let's run honestly against each other.
Is that why you run against him?
That's not why I'm running against him, no.
What, what are the reasons?
I, 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 I think that, that. That. If you're running for a position, you don't. Do something that violates your ethics.
Yeah.
You don't do that. It, it shows who you are, it shows your character, that shows that you don't have character. That you don't respect law, he's a retired police officer and he's, and he's violating. The election laws by wearing his uniform. That isn't who you want to run, that isn't what, who you want to represent you, a cheater. It's a cheater, exactly. It's a cheater. And you don't want cheaters in office, we have enough of those right now.
That, that's why this country is the way it is right now.
We don't need more. Cheating. And, and, and. Yeah. And Mr. Sebock, is it? Had, did that, he did that.
I, I just wanna clarify, did, did you mention the best of Henderson and the worst, cause I don't think I, I don't think.
Well, we talked about, we talked about Boulder Highway kinda being, you know, the worst, there's still a lot of good on.
So Boulder Highway is the worst based on, based on what?
Well, there's some crime down there and there's some of the things that you mentioned.
Street war.
But I gotta tell you something, my, I.
Low lighting.
I have a, I have a, a building that I own down right off of Boulder Highway by the Skyline Casino, I love that part of Henderson. I love it. You go, there's, there's Boxers Deli down there where you get a fantastic sub sandwich and a pizza.
And he says that he's not a politician.
I'm not a politician. I was there two days ago and I bought me a sub.
At least you.
I, I wanted to stick to the reason why Boulder Highway's all messed up.
I, I know.
I was like the lighting, the crime, the street warriors, and he went right to the sub deli place.
I love that place, I love that place.
Is, is that the best thing about Henderson, that sub deli place, tell me the best thing?
The best thing about Henderson is that, that I'm gonna be on the city council.
Before that. Before that?
Okay.
What's the best thing about Henderson?
You know, I, I love the community. I love
Oh, you did mention the people.
The people are awesome. I, I, like I told you before, I have a business down there. I have so many customers in Henderson. They're, they just, they're fantastic people. They're good people. I can call them up and I talk to them.
Do you give back to the community? Like give a turkey away or what do you do?
I, I give to my employees.
Okay.
I, 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 you know, do that to, I give things like that to them.
Christmas bonuses?
Christmas bonuses. I, I try and take care of them as best I can. Um, you know, I, I, I haven't given a lot back to the community. I haven't done that.
Do you have any nonprofits or anything like that?
I, I don't sponsor any except I volunteer at Friends in the Desert, which we talked about in a minute. Yeah. And I spend, I'm on, I, I started volunteering there. I, I volunteer there on Thursdays and I, I, I run the program there on Thursdays. After I did that for a while, they asked me to be on their board. So I sit on the board of directors also.
Alan, is there anything that, uh, you wanna mention that, uh, we didn't bring up? Cause I think we've probably covered
We've covered a lot of stuff, haven't we?
Yeah, yeah.
Except for I got one more question and I swear, for once, and Steve's gonna be proud of me for this one because usually I go
Last question.
One last question and
It's usually adds five or more. They're all the last questions.
But actually there is something that is, uh, pretty, uh, it's a particular interest of mine as far as, uh, Henderson Ward One.
Yeah.
It's like the roads. Okay.
Roads?
The roads, particularly the, what they call the metal streets. So Copper Street, some of those roads. I mean, it is, those roads are horrific.
Yeah.
What is there that you could do is that would be your award that you could do to help improve those? Cause those roads are really bad.
Yeah, they're bad. So here's what I can't figure out. Have you guys, you guys traveled around? I know you've been, traveled around different states in the United States and I assume you have too. Have you noticed that Nevada's roads are some of the best anywhere? Have you noticed that?
Especially coming from Carson.
Yeah.
Just did that.
Okay, so actually I should, I should be more specific. I really haven't traveled a lot in Nevada, but, but if you take the Las Vegas Valley, the roads are really nice.
Yeah, there's some nice roads.
There's some nice roads. I mean, as soon as you go across the border into any road into California, Arizona, Utah, they're not as good. So somebody's done a good job in those areas. We need to bring some of those tax dollars, cause that's taxes that takes care of that, and bring those to the old part of Henderson and fix those roads.
Yeah, cause those roads are really freaking bad.
Yeah, they are. I drive down there. So that's where St. Timothy's is, is in that same neighborhood. And I spend a lot of time in there. I've, I've driven down every single one of those roads and looked at all the houses and seen and, and saw who lived there. And that's my district, you know, I've been in there and I agree that we need to do something to fix the roads. Now, I don't know the road, not to pun, the road to get those roads repaired, okay? But I intend on finding out and doing that.
Yeah, doesn't, doesn't end up taking that?
I don't think so. I think that's a city thing. Those, those are city roads.
Yeah, it's a city.
So there's a budget. There's a budget and I'm sure that there's a plan for certain roads to, to be fixed. I mean, my office is on Corporate Park Drive. That road was, I mean, you couldn't drive on it. There was so-called potholes.
You don't know what the city budget is, do you?
I do not, no.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's one of the things I look forward to getting into is the budget, the numbers, where the money's going and, and all of those good things. That's one of my strong points is numbers.
Did I ask you what makes you qualify? Did I?
Yeah, we, we talked about that. Let me tell you again?
No. I'll, I'll just go back and we want to
I, I have no more questions. I just like, if, when you get elected, if you could take a look on those roads, because those roads back there are
Yeah, I got, I got one more before we, before we sign off. So what do you plan to do for veterans in your area?
I love veterans.
Everybody says that.
No, it's true. I, I
So what are you gonna do to fix the parking lot at the V F W that's in Ward One? Cause that parking
So I drive by that all the time and I see the sign that says Fish Fry Two Days or whatever days. And I'm is anybody welcome to go to that?
Yeah, it's open to the public.
Is it? I'm gonna stop in there one day and, and take part of that. That, it looks really good to me, but I
Help them, help them fix that parking lot. That's one thing you could do for veterans.
Yeah.
Because both my grandparents were, uh, veterans of former wars. They were Korean War vets.
Yeah, definitely. I'll, I'll definitely go get into that.
Sorry. You know we're gonna hold you to it, right?
You know something? You could hold me to everything I said. Okay. That's who I am.
Okay. So, so that, that empty lot where the, um, was it the Reserve Hotel and then it went to, um, what's the one, um, Fiesta Hotel?
Fiesta Henderson.
Yeah, what's, what's going on over there?
So they did a survey of a whole bunch of different people in the city and, and the, the majority of the people want some kind of public, uh, space there, whether it be, uh, vendors, parks, you know, recreation and things like that.
Like a Y M C A? Do you have one in here?
I don't think we have one. That'd be a great spot for it.
Ah, there you go.
Somebody else wanted
With a pool?
A pool might be nice. Pools cost a lot of money, but yeah.
The city would have to remove the parking garage, cause that's still
The parking garage. So I have a wild idea about that space and I don't think anybody else agrees with me anyplace. But why not, why not take that spot and move the city offices there? Build a multi-story building, which is, you know, it's right next to the freeway.
Talking about money.
Talking about money. Why not build a multi-story building, put lease space in it so you could rent it out to different people? You could put the courts, the jails, everybody else there. You could lease the top floors to the, all the, these, these attorneys that we have around here. The attorneys and other people like that, make it, make it a cash cow.
It's right by the pool.
And it's good access and you could earn money. The symphony director in Henderson will like a new symphony building there. He has parking for that. He needs a very small space to do it. We could do things like that and make it generate money versus costing us money.
Right.
I told that to the people. They called me and asked me what I thought we should do there a few months ago. They listened, but when I got their report on what they decided, that was not included.
But you do understand that, uh, when people move in the area, they wanna know where all the community spots are.
Sure.
And if they know that there's a Y M C A there.
Yeah, that could be there too.
They could
Yeah, that could be there too. You could, you could do all of that. That space is big enough. You've already got a parking garage. Why not build a building that can generate? You know, and pay for some of these things.
Okay, let me ask you, okay, again, you know, Steve's gonna get hurt.
See, you see? I told that to Kerry Carson.
Okay, okay.
Look, he just had one question like 10 minutes ago, right?
Well, no, because, because I know a lot about the Fiesta Henderson property, so I'm sorry to
It's gone.
Elaborate. I know. And my brother worked there, so I'm
He's gone too.
No, he's not gone. He's still there.
Fiesta property.
I'm fully, so what I'm just saying, so just in a little way, this'll just be a quick question.
Yes, is that one more of your last question? After he, after he, he told on himself. Here we go.
And, and this guy's supposed to be my friend.
He goes, Alan, he goes, no, this is my last question. No, I won't do it. Cause I always say it's my last question.
One more and you do one more and one more.
It's okay, let's keep doing it.
It's a simple yes or no question. Do you know, and I'm just asking this for just my own personal information. Do you know if the Fertitas, have they re-leased that property yet?
I don't know.
Okay.
I was under the understanding that, that Henderson City owned it, but I, I don't know the backroom numbers that have been
Right, yeah, okay. That, that was my question. I'm like, we were talking about developing that property and moving stuff in and I know the, uh, parking garage is still there. But I didn't know if the Fertitas had, had actually sold it to the city of Henderson.
I think they did sell it because that's how they built in Durango and that's how they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're talking about building something in Centennial Hills over in Sky King.
Yeah.
Sky King.
So there you have it. Yeah, I don't have the facts, but I kinda think that they've received the money.
I, I, I was just curious on that. That's all. Just general curiosity, like I
Right. All right, man. It's awesome. You guys are awesome.
Thank you.
Alan, thank you so much for coming on the show. Mark is gonna zoom in on you and you get to say, you know, my website. I'm sure you have one. My email address, point of contact.
That's how new I am. I don't have that.
And you ready to rock and roll on the ground. You ready to go. You got your, you got your team in place. They all got your shirt on, squires for council.
I should have brought my t-shirts.
I know. Yard signs are ready, ready printed. You've got your rack cards. They're ready to go. You got all your, 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 your 32nd, um, P S A announcement, announcements ready?
We're ready.
I know.
Yeah, we're not ready.
There you go.
So thank you guys for listening. I appreciate it. I appreciate, um, um, I assume that there's a lot of veterans that are listening. I appreciate your service. You know, I was talking to one of my friends the other day and they said that they get stopped a lot and they say, people say, thank you for your service and, and thank you for your service. But you know something, you guys? I gotta tell you, welcome home. I'm glad you came home. I'm glad you're here. I'm just glad you came home. So I appreciate any of your votes. Um, I believe, well, I know that I can do a good job for Henderson City and my ward. And I hope some of you live in Ward One. I suspect that most of you know somebody in Ward One. And I would appreciate you telling them, uh, to vote for me. My website is not up. Steve was very kind. Um, I've just decided to do this. So my website is not up, but it's gonna be, uh, voteforalan squires dot com. And I have electalan squires dot com.
Probably want to spell that last name.
My name is spelled A L A N, last name S Q U I R E S. And if you wanna email me, love to talk to all of you. It is electalan squires, uh, doc, at G, electalan squires at gmail dot com and voteforalan squires at gmail dot com. Love to talk to you guys. Love to talk to you guys. Cell number, uh, seven zero two eight five eight nine three one nine. Call me. I wanna talk to you guys. Let's talk. Uh, when you call that number, if I, if I can't answer, you'll get a, my company, uh, message, which is from Mountain View Pest Control. Leave a message. If I'm talking to a customer, of course I can't answer, but leave a message. I will call you back. Let's talk. Uh, let's, let's get a group together. You guys wanna come volunteer for my campaign? I need people to, uh, go around and knock on doors, hand out flyers. Talk about my campaign. I'm not a bad mouther. I don't believe in bad mouthing people. I do believe in, in telling you what I stand for. I believe in God. I believe in this country. I, I just want to do the right thing and get us back on track and do the things that we're supposed to be doing. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Squires, thank you for coming on the show.
Alan.
Alan. Jim, thank you for coming on. Well, how am I gonna do your name if I can't do the Alan? I mean, the Squires. Folks, that's Alan Squires. He's a candidate, uh, running for, uh, Henderson City Council, Ward Number One. You know, this, this interview was very informative. Take a look at him. Look at his website once it comes up and, uh, make sure you're educated voter when you go to the voting booth. This is Steve Sansa, Jim Jones with Veterans and Politics. Until next time.